Good afternoon and welcome. At this time, I'd like to call our Suffolk City Council work session to order. Please be advised that Vice Mayor Ward is, has been delayed and may not be able to attend our work session and has been excused. Our first item for discussion this afternoon concerns will be an update of the Southside Network Authority. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. With us this afternoon is Marcellus Nixon, Southside Network Authority Executive Director. Mr. Nixon will provide an update on the SNA Regional Fiber Ring status and initiatives. Marcellus, welcome to Suffolk.
Glad to be here. It's an honor to be before you today to provide this update. So again, my name is Marcellus Nixon. I'm the Executive Director of the Southside Network Authority. So a little bit about me, born and raised in Hampton, Virginia. So left at 18, came back at 58 to run this project and it's one of the honors of my life and my career. So before I started working at the, for the Southside Network Authority, I was the VP of Consulting and Implementation at EnTrust Solutions. And a project that's very similar to the one that we're building, I led an 800-mile fiber optic network infrastructure project in north central Texas. I'm a U.S. Army veteran, proud graduate of University of Virginia, and came to this area to kind of move the needle forward on this project. So just a little bit of background on the Southside Network Authority. So five cities, as you guys well know, came together to implement this ring and formed the Southside Network Authority to manage the project, the implementation and the operation of the project. So a little bit of a timeline, I won't read this out word for word, but it's basically project started conversation around July of 2017. And then I'll move forward through the SNA or Southside Network Authority being formed in 2019. And then we hope to have the ring, we're trending towards the date of 30 March of 2026, to have it completed. So the Regional Connectivity Ring details, it's 119 miles. It traverses each one of the five Southside Cities. The original purpose of this infrastructure was to decrease city telecom and internet expense. It also enables internet and data transmission capability going forward. And I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go forward. It consists of 288 fiber strands and each city is allocated six of those strands to connect anywhere on the ring. And then we have a public-private partnership with our partner, Global Technical Systems slash Spark with a Q Networks. So the Regional Connectivity Ring, as I said, traverses through Suffolk. The diagram on the right side is you can see the area that it traverses, just around where we're sitting today. This building will be what we call a point of presence and we'll have equipment here that will allow connectivity directly to the ring itself. So the benefits of the ring, there are 10 of them here at a high level, but there are many more. Each one of these benefits has its own benefit itself. So there's opportunities for residences, businesses, and then community resilience is one of the big things that we're talking about now. And then accessibility going forward into the future. Happy to answer any questions you may have on the ring itself or the organization or anything you might have.
Council, any questions, comments? Looks like everybody's good right now. Yes.
Marcellus, if you could give Council a little bit of update on the construction activities as they're going on, what's been in play, put in place, what we're working on from a conduit aspect to what fiber is being pulled at this time?
Sure. So as of this time, we have segments of the ring ready. We're basically splicing it together. So splicing is when you just join the segments together. So we're about, I would say about 75% done with the ring at this point. We've also taken the opportunity to put extra conduit in, in places so we can pull more fiber in the future when it's needed. So not only is the infrastructure self-proof or future-proof, we've also put extra capacity in place that allows us to put more fiber for future needs. So today, we're working Suffolk and then working east. The last portion of the ring will be Virginia Beach.
Council, any other questions, comments?
I see all over the city, we have these pop-up things all over the city. Is that a part of you all, low fiber?
Some of them might be ours. They're called mat sticks, by the way. So it's just basically to notify you where the fiber is running. Some of them may be ours, but some of them, a lot of them will probably be your local carriers that you have in the city already. It's just to mark the public right-of-way space for existing conduit or fiber itself.
Okay, because that's what a lot of people ask the question, they see it there and they don't know, well, when are we going to get this and when is that going to happen? So I'm just trying to get a little bit of feel of who responsibility or whatever that would be.
So in the city of Suffolk today, there are current fiber providers in the city itself. We're not providing internet access ourselves, we're a middle-mile network, but we are enabling a lot of the connectivity from city to city. But you guys do have a formidable, we call it last mile of service endpoint, service endpoints meaning connectivity to homes and businesses going on in the city already. So if any of those providers need, for example, to, or extra capacity, we have fiber capacity available for them.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Councilman Bennett, if I could add to Marcellus's statement there, it is a combination of what you're seeing. A few of them are the Southside Network Ring, but majority of that you're seeing is low fiber or FiOS through Verizon is also installing, along with maybe some spectrum.
Councilman Johnson?
Marcell, I'm just curious, because we're moving east, you said we're heading east, being the westernmost point, are we kind of almost complete then? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so a lot of the Suffolk infrastructure is in, when I look at our dashboard that shows construction, much of the infrastructure that needs to go in Suffolk is already in. We'll be pulling fiber through existing conduit very shortly to complete the city.
Very good. That's good. Thank you.
Sure.
Council, any other questions or comments? I'm hearing none, I do have ones, usually always concerning money. So where are we as far as budget? How does that look? I think every city contributed an equal share, about $5 million. Are we, does it look like this project's going to be on budget or under budget?
Yeah, so it's going to be on budget. We've looked at areas where we could do what we call value engineering, which is when the original designer put together design for the ring, we look for opportunities, especially since my team and I have looked for ways to cut costs when we can. This project will be on budget and on time as of today.
Okay, and my next question is, trying to recall the conversation, when it was formed and it was discussed, and I mean, you mentioned that this enables connectivity to providers and those providers are going to pay a fee when they hook up to the network that's finished out. So how, how is that income going to be accounted for? What does it cover and is that, could that be a, or is that a possible revenue source for the city?
It's definitely a possible revenue source. So you're right, each city invested $5 million. So any fees that are generated as far as revenue from the ring will be shared amongst all the member cities. But I will say that there's a tremendous monetization capability with this infrastructure and the Southside Network Authority will be managing that part of the project. So once it's done, we'll be able to bring on like any provider that needs access, even businesses that needs to go, that need to go from one point in Suffolk, for example, over to Virginia Beach can use this ring. And then all the cities will reap the benefits from a monetary standpoint.
Okay, so assume the initial revenue would be applied to the administration of the network itself?
Yes.
And then from there, any surplus could be distributed to the localities and that is, is that on an equal basis regardless of where the service comes from?
Yes, that's, that would be done by equal basis today. But depending on where you are on the ring, there could be more opportunities in one location than another, but it will all be distributed amongst all the five member cities.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Council, any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much for your presentation, Mr. Nixon. We appreciate it. Okay, our next item for discussion will be an overview to Virginia Cooperative Extension. Mr. Manager?
Yes, we have the opportunity tonight to have with us Andrea Sly, Agricultural and Natural Resources Agent with the Virginia Cooperative Extension. Ms. Sly will provide an overview of the extension services this afternoon. Andrea?
Good afternoon. I'm glad to be here with you all today. Again, I'm Andrea Sly and we just wanted to take a chance to introduce ourselves to you if you didn't already know us and the services that we offer here within the city. So to get started, I need to ask, how many of you have ever heard of extension or maybe been involved with us at all? Show a hand. Oh, I am impressed. Very good, very good. So some of this stuff in the beginning, I may be able to move pretty quickly through because it sounds like a good number of you know who we are. But basically, if you don't, we are here to serve the people. That is what we're here for. We are literally communicators gathering information from our land-grant universities. So we work under Virginia Tech and Virginia State University. And all the research that they do, we take that and we put it into a form that's useful to our community, something that they can actually take action with, okay? So if they're doing research on a particular crop, we can take that data to our farmers and say, hey, this is what's going on, be on the lookout for, this is what you can do if you run into issues with this particular pest or variety and so forth. So that's why we're here, is simply to help our communities and provide them with impactful resources. So if you didn't know, not only do you have an office here in Suffolk, but we actually have 107 offices throughout Virginia, okay? So it's not just us, all of our neighboring cities have offices as well. We also have 11 research facilities throughout the state and lucky enough, we have one right here in Suffolk as well. So a lot of folks, when we talk about extension, think we are the folks that are down on Holland. That is our, we'll say our sister location, that is one of our research facilities. And they specialize in row crop research. So if I have, for instance, a farmer with a soybean issue, I can go to Dr. Ortell and say, hey, this is what we're dealing with, what do we have, what can we do? So we are very lucky to have that facility right here in our own city. We also have six 4H centers throughout the state. And again, we don't have one right here in Suffolk, but we do have one close by, that's the Airfield 4H Center, if you're familiar with that. In fact, our 4H agent Laura will be taking a load of those children to that 4H camp next week for their annual summer camp. So we have quite a network, we work well together, you know, with different sharing of informations and programs and projects that we're doing throughout the state. So as a whole, Virginia Cooperative Extension is here to help, here to impact the community, but we do have certain specialties that we work with. So we just wanted to make you aware of what extension has to offer. So as a whole, we have a lot of different agricultural and natural resources programs and it differs according to our communities as to what we offer. Now, here in the city of Suffolk, we have a little bit of everything, okay? Because we go from city to rural. So we offer a lot of different things within that realm and I'll tell you a little bit more about those as we go further. 4H youth development, we have programming specifically for our future and helping them. We have family and consumer sciences, which as you can see, covers many things related to our families and their success, including nutrition and financial management. And then we also have a family nutrition program that we work with as well, that's out there in the communities, giving people information on how to stay healthy as far as nutrition goes. So as far as the Suffolk office goes, the faces that you will see if you come by, visit us or participate in one of our programs, this is our office, we are right across the street. We are at 440 Market Street. So the building, which all of our mail indicates, used to be the old Human Resources Building. We are up on the third floor, so we would love for you to come by and see us. Again, I'm Andrea Sly and I am your Agriculture and Natural Resources Agent and I'm also the unit coordinator for our office as well. We have Laura Edwards, giveaway Laura, she's here in the audience as well. She is our 4H Youth Development Agent. We have Lisa Godwin. She is our Adult Nutrition Education Facilitator. And I don't have her picture up here, but we're going to point her out too. This is Erin Wishaw and she is our Administrative and Fiscal Assistant. So she is the face you see when you enter our office. So as far as the three educators go, I wanted to tell you a little bit about what we do. Within agriculture and natural resources, basically, if it involves plants, I'm involved, okay? So I work with a lot of different groups. Obviously, we do have a very good-sized agricultural community here in Suffolk, so I will work with those farmers and producers. We also have a great green industry here and that's where a lot of my background lies as well, is in the lawn and landscape industry, as well as our homeowners. And I will work with them, again, anything related to plants, starting from soil health to things like pest ID and management, fruits and vegetables, row crops, lawn and landscape best practices, things of that nature. Some of the programs that I currently have in play, we do have an agreement with the Virginia Department of Agriculture's Office of Pesticide Services, where we provide education for pesticide applicators. So we provide initial education so that they can get their licenses and we also provide recertification because they have to renew those licenses every two years. We also offer other pesticide programs for them to help with things like pesticide disposal. And you do have a brochure in your folder about an upcoming pesticide disposal program that we have that is not only for our producers and our lawn and landscape industry, but our homeowners too, to get rid of unneeded or unused pesticides. And instead of just throwing them in the landfill, we're going to recycle them. We also have plant and pest ID services. We do a lot of that in the office, but again, because we are through our land-grant universities, we also have the access to some great labs. So when it comes to things like diseases and insects, if we need assistance with identification, we have those lab resources to use as well. We love to educate, that's what we're here for. And so for our producers, we do crop conferences from field crops to fruit and vegetables to peanuts to cotton. We have meetings for them and educational opportunities for them. In fact, coming up, we have a twilight tour at our research station for our corn and soybean crops, for people to come out and see what's going on in trials and so forth. Farm to school is something that I'm really passionate about and I'm actually serving on a statewide team with the Virginia Department of Education right now to connect our school systems with agriculture. So we have been doing different things from introducing agricultural education into the classroom, to connecting school nutrition services and farmers so that we can get fresh produce and other things, meat as well, into our school system. So actually tomorrow, I will be taking a group of school nutrition professionals out to a couple farms to see where that stuff really comes from and trying to help them make some connections so that if they're interested in purchasing those fresh fruits and vegetables, we can make those connections for them. And if you've heard of extension, I'm sure you've probably heard of master gardeners before. And the master gardeners are actually my volunteers. So there is one of me and there's a little over 100,000 people in Suffolk, so I need some help sometimes. So I employ a group of volunteers called the master gardeners and each year I recruit a new group of them, train them, and then they assist with programming in the communities as well. So they are instrumental in getting programs into our schools, working with our homeowners. They've been present at many of our city's events, like the Earth and Arts Festival, Taste of Suffolk, and last year we were able to get at Peanut Fest as well. I work with a lot of different departments throughout the city already and hope that maybe with some discussion, we can work with even more. But Parks and Rec, Public Works, we have a lot of folks who work for the city who have to have pesticide licensure. So just for instance, as soon as I started here in Suffolk, a little less than two years ago, I started working with Mark Everett in the grounds department and getting his folks certified. So you now have a fully certified grounds maintenance department that can go out and use pesticides to help control pests in the communities. And I'm working with Chad Oxton now as well to try to get his group on board. I participate with your agricultural advisory committee, that has been an excellent opportunity with a great group of folks trying to raise awareness about agriculture within our city. The public schools, specifically school nutrition, I don't know if you know this, but your school system was able to provide fresh ground beef to its high schools last year and this year they have gotten a contract so that they can provide fresh ground beef to all of their schools from a livestock producer right here in Virginia. So we're really proud of that. Libraries, we were just over there today. We had a great time at Mess Hall where they provide lunches for young people and we taught them how to make their own butter. Should have brought some with us, actually. We had them rolling and shaking with some heavy whipping cream, making some butter over at Morgan Memorial this afternoon. And then working with the food bank as well, we have a series of classes and that's actually on your little master gardener brochure that we've been doing over at the Western Tidewater Food Bank to teach people about how to grow and prepare their own food. All right, so let's get off agriculture and we'll talk a little bit about 4H. I think most of you are probably familiar with or have heard about 4H before. It is youth development. It is kind of a learn-by-doing curriculum where our 4H agent and other 4H volunteers work with students in helping them to develop really important skills like leadership and She works with them in a lot of different ways. There are in-school programs, there are clubs, there is camp. Her two clubs that she's working with right now are an animal science club and a horse and pony club. And anyone who has an idea about other clubs, we're always looking for ideas and volunteers who want to help. 4H camp, like I said, is next week and Laura has done a great job of building up a great crowd of young people to attend that. And then of course, her in-school programming, she was able to do some embryology projects. So we had some new chicks hatched in some of our elementary school classrooms this year, as well as helping with a lot of different career days and STEM days as well. And of course, 4H is a very well-known national program, so if you need information about 4H, you can simply Google it and you will find a lot of this information online on how much impact this has on students' lives, preparing them for college and career and getting them engaged with their communities so as they become adults, they are active in those communities. And then lastly, we have our family nutrition program and Lisa works specifically with communities who receive some type of assistance, they're lower-income families, and she is working with them to teach them about nutrition and taking care of their health. These are some of the programs that she offers to the community with different groups. She works specifically with adults. Those programs do also have a youth component, but at this time, we don't have someone in that position. She partners with a lot of different organizations around the city to help reach those specific communities and she has a lot of great giveaways too. A lot of the programs that she has not only teaches people about nutrition, but they then gives them the equipment for them to be able to do it. Things like crock pots, measuring spoons, she's got quite the little prize chest of things that she is able to distribute to people when she does these programs. Unfortunately, this, at this time, we're unsure if this program will continue after September 30th due to SNAP Ed funding. So hopefully we can keep her around and keep those great nutrition programs as well. So I just wanted to finish with repeating what I said from the beginning, we are here to help. You have seen all of the different things that we have to offer to the community. Most of our programs are free or low cost and they're available to anyone in the city of Suffolk. We do also do some regional programming as well, but we are specifically here to help Suffolk, to help deliver impactful programming and information, to help the communities to be successful. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Council, questions or comments? I knew you guys got a question or comment. Councilmember Butler-Balow.
Thank you, Mayor. You knew I was going to have to say something. I just, I'm very excited to have our extension office personnel here tonight because Virginia Cooperative Extension, of course, is a partnership between Virginia State University and Virginia Tech Go Hokies. And it, it's in every community around the entire Commonwealth. And it's not just about agriculture, which, you know, you know I'm, I want it to be all about agriculture, but it really, it's for homeowners, it's for citizens. I've actually worked on some of the nutrition training programs back when we were growing vegetables, supplied vegetables and went to some of the trainings and, you know, we're providing a lot of great information, I say we, I'm lumping myself in with you guys. The extension office provides so much good information for folks in the community and the youth programming is wonderful. 4H camp, I never went, but I sent kids there and there's just so many, just what Andrea covered, just a broad range of services. You didn't mention your well water testing, but that ended, like, was that today?
No, it's next week.
Okay, next week. So if you're on a well, not on city water, the extension service will test your well water for a much reduced price over going through the health department. It's a great service if you're on a home well and it's, it's a very simple process to do that. So that's, you know, like I said, a very, very broad range of services, not just... services, not just, you know, how's your cotton growing? So, I just appreciate you all being here, I appreciate everything that you do. Um, I'm glad the elevator's fixed. Sorry, I had to say that. Um, but I just, I'm excited that you all were here to provide us for some information, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. And I do have a well water flyer in your folder for you, if you or anyone you know is interested. I have personally participated in the program, just to see how things went, found some interesting stuff out, and nobody checks your well except for you. So, um, it's a great opportunity.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you for a great presentation. Um, actually, I remember the Extension Service, when I was a youth, um, was really, really, um, as a matter of fact, my mother was part of it, and they were really active, and it's nice to know that, what you guys are doing now. Um, I do have a question as it relates to the pesticide applicator license.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, how often is that, do you have a class, and how often, uh, or where could I go to, to find out some information as to how to apply or attend, or?
So, for initial certification?
Yes.
Or, okay, well, I have a class, actually, August 26th through 28th, um, and I have information on our website, and I'd be happy to provide you with more as well. So, we try to at least once a year, do a certification class. So, for folks who need to get their licenses, their only option really is to order the manual, the manual, and read it. It is great reading if you cannot sleep at night, okay? It's not super colorful. So, we wanna make sure that folks are able to get their licenses, so they are able to do things safely and to contribute to our economy as well. Um, so we do them at least once, but I will tell you, last year, we had such a demand, we ended up doing three classes throughout the year. Um, so we will have one in August, and then if we get demand, we will continue to schedule them.
Right, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Councilmember Bennett.
Hey, just a couple of questions. Uh, well, I was a part of 4H coming up when I was a young man.
Very good.
I used to take, I used to enjoy summer, going out, doing that. Uh, but grub worms and moles and stuff like that, do y'all handle, or give people advice on how to deal with that?
We do, yes. So, we do have a great website that has publications on it, usually they're, you know, just a couple of pages of pertinent information, how to identify, how to treat, things like that. But you can also call us, um, our Master Gardeners have a helpline, and you have a pencil in your packet with their information on it, and they can help you, or if you stop by the office, um, and I'm in, I'm happy to help you with that as well, so.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson.
And I'll be-
Very, very brief, Andrea, I think-
You cut yourself off, I think.
I have something else. Thank you. I'm, was excited to know you were gonna be here tonight, because a strong Virginia Cooperative Extension Service is vital to a community. And right now, guys, we have a really good department over there, and they offer so much for the people of this city, and for us as a council, and for the city itself, to make our lives better. So, I just wanna thank you, and make sure people know that the Extension Service is out there to serve, um, use them, and we all will, I hope. I hope we can get into the schools more, I think, I hope we can train more with the schools, and with the Farm Committee and these things, and I, I'm so pleased. I think we're as strong now in your department as we've been in ten years, or fifteen, or whatever, I'm just really, really pleased. So, thank you. Thank you for being here, thank you for keeping us informed.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? Um, hearing none, Ms. Allen, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, from my standpoint, I tell you, you've really opened my eyes. You know, I raised my hand, because I had heard Virginia Extension driving back and forth to Franklin, if I didn't know any better, I thought you were there. But if you'd asked me what you actually do, uh, my thought process was, when I did soil samples, checked seeds, you know, what crops to plant, that it was strictly technical information between you and the farming community. I had no idea, I'm embarrassed to say I had no idea, I guess I'm supposed to know, but after, you know, almost fifteen years being up here and being in the city of Suffolk for forty-seven plus years, I had no idea at all that you do so many, uh, I mean, your mission is so broad, and who, um, you know, you, you deal with the citizens. My question is, you know, how do we promote your services? And I'm not, I really don't need to answer this, but I don't even know if you have a presence on our city website. Uh, and from our city's website, is there a link to Virginia Co-op? And do our citizens even know that these services are available? I mean, I, I mean, for one, I mean, I've had my well checked, not lately, but I'll be glad to get that done, and the services that you offer are only gonna do, as well as the citizens that take advantage of them. Uh, the fact that you're working hand-in-hand with our agricultural committee is huge. I mean, the, the two things that, I mean, I'm looking for is how you work collaboratively with them, I assume, to improve productivity, when you're improving productivity, you're improving profitability, and all that, one thing leads to another further investment and expansion, maybe of projects to have. I mean, the 4H program, uh, when we look at what's going on in the agricultural community, and I think one of the stats was, is only twenty percent of all the farmers are under forty-five years old, then we have a problem. You know, if, if we're not cultivating individuals to continue on in investing time and, and invest their careers in agriculture. So, I can see where this is, you know, an invaluable service, I'm just not sure that we're using it. So, my suggestion would be to get with our agricultural folks and media and city, and see how we can use our resources to get the information out, you know, to our citizens. But I'm, I'm elated that you are here this evening, and that you've put this information out. Hopefully, some of our citizens will pick up on it, uh, just tonight, because you were here with your presentation, and we'll continue to promote what you do.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Butler Barlow.
I just had, just a point of information for council, if you dig deep into your city budget, there's a line item that funds the local Virginia Cooperative Extension Office, and of course, its house in the old Human Resources Building, and that's a, that's a statewide agreement between Virginia State, Virginia Tech, and all localities. So, just so, just so you know, we do, there is a connection, but we need to make it-
No, yeah, I mean, I knew dollar-wise, but, but I figured it was all just related-
Yep.
-strictly on a commercial basis with the farmers-
Right.
And there weren't so many services that were actually offered to our citizens, that most citizens could take advantage of. If they got a yard, they can take advantage of it.
Right, unfortunately, a well-kept secret, but not now.
It is a well-kept secret, now we're gonna get it out. All right, awesome.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you once again. Okay, that concludes our work session, we do have a need for a closed meeting this evening. Madam Clerk, will you please present the motion for consideration?
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, the discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for appointment, and the assignment, appointment, and performance of specific public officers or appointees of this city, specifically the appointments as shown on the attached list for vacancies or term expirations, for the community policy and management team, the Early Childhood Development Commission, the Fine Arts Commission, the Historic Landmarks Commission, the Human Services Advisory Board, the Local Board of Building Code Appeals, the Paul D. Camp Community College Board, the Sister Cities Commission, the South Side Network Authority, the Southeastern Public Service Authority, Suffolk Clean Community Commission, the Planning Council, the Tidewater Youth Services Commission, Western Tidewater Regional Jail Authority Board, and the Western Tidewater Water Authority. Item number two, pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or of the disposition of publicly held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body. Specifically, Tax Map Parcel Number 33 Asterit 14C, 33 Asterit 14, and 34 G17A Asterit 39.
Council motion has been presented for consideration, with your pleasure, council, excuse me, Councilmember Butler Barlow. Got a motion for approval, Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Williams.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Williams, is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Councilmember Wright, can you please cast your vote? I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rector?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
That concludes our meeting, we will reconvene at 6:00 PM.